You're not talking.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I think you already got to that anymore.
Where are we at, noon what time?
About two in the afternoon.
Is there church here?
No, I go to the library.
You go to church. Exactly. Exactly.
I'll move it in.
If you think of it sometime, you'll see. Blacktop in the back of the truck. They were deep through the sand as well. Tore that great. Before they hauled down their nerve. There's a big chunk out in that way in the morning. Four or five trouble points if you hide that wouldn't help them.
Some available things to do on South Main Street.
Yeah, where it cracked up to where they made a driveway. I'm sorry if nobody come in here.
Crowded.
Amy up at Lawrence Town. She got the job done. It's a gold for a couple. She like it?
She likes it right now.
Of course. You know, she did. You know, everybody had a chance to look down. And I just didn't think I'd like it, you know, in breadth respect. Amy's a nice girl, even if she is your. We locked her down lately. Probably all she's making is a little wage. She could find a job. We like it down there, but I can see it's a lot of work. What she make. Yeah. Think she was gone when Amy taken over. You don't know what she make, but it's good enough to sell. She like the. Yes, she does. Didn't do it right. She hadn't put in a grill. Fryer, but then you have to put in a hose and an anthill system.
Oh, she does a nice job. She makes the those. They dropped. And he was amazed. And they threw one foot. How many tons of took the hole out? Then they throw it back. Then maybe they do down fifty. There's a doing it. Yeah. Well, there, what can you hear to you?
Yes. Couple of sneaky.
See your name.
But I don't know.
Twenty four. Get on there or something. Maybe get better.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. She was off and stuff and, uh, bro.
Yeah.
I think she was very.
Let's see.
She always.
You know, I know how much she has, but I.
She has a leather.
He was taking it all together.
Hundred day off. Yeah.
Fifteen years.
Yeah.
I say I'm firing the far forward so that I go away.
Hello, Walt.
Did any of you guys make the thing Saturday? It was a good turnout today.
Some people, they had a great. Some others, whoever, they would have loved.
Together?
Yeah.
I, I, I think I stand. Virginia. You went by yourself?
Yes, I did.
Was it interesting?
Still looking very nice. You know, you have, you saw a lot of stuff.
I hope after all the work that you've been through. Satisfying.
Smaller.
Smaller.
Talking about the.
Well, they, I heard a question. It was like seven.
The color. Really? I was like, but.
I told my wife.
I was. Lights, is there anything?
Right, how are you?
Yeah, a little.
Good.
Man, sure. You know, like, hey. And then she quit me.
I'll say you have some money for me.
Thanks for the cash. Uh, I lose.
Well, she still on. She's made it.
Isn't he one lane?
Oh, you kidding? Yeah, it's on the spot.
You know, the seat after.
Where do they come from? Yeah, last name. They have to show. You know, you don't. It like fits. How are the comments here? What happened? Ten more seconds.
Oh, you lost it.
What did you have our thinking? This weekend, Friday, Saturday.
You ready, Jim? I have to follow the order, the August seventh, two thousand twelve special meeting. Please stand.
Lord, we pray that you will give our council members the faith and courage to carry on their duties, hope and to do right and to deal fairly with others and to place their trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna. Bishop?
Here.
King?
Here. Here.
Challenger? Lichten?
Here.
Spackle?
Here.
Chamberlain?
Here.
Winstone?
Here.
Due to the fact it's a special meeting, they have one item on the agenda. It's in their own business. Do the length of the ordinance, man, of most agree by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Bishop?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Lichten?
Yes.
Ordinance number twelve dash zero dash two seven zero one, second reading. An ordinance amending Combe and City Ordinance Number zero seven dash zero dash two four one one for the purpose of broadening the services of Arcadus U.S. For the purpose of providing engineering services for construction phase and for resident project representation of a water plant project. So. Any comments?
I was here at the last meeting. I didn't want clarification on what all we ended up doing from a negotiating standpoint.
Dan can probably help you too, but basically what we've done is, uh, you know, remember the original proposal was to add fifty thousand for additional work, which, uh, is this attachment one. And okay, what they'll do, get this project, pack it one. And, uh, that's the fifty thousand and USDA has reviewed that and agrees with those tasks. And cost, they'll approve the cost. And, uh, the other was the, uh, situation when, when the four percent kicked in. So what Dan's interpretation was and mine and USDA was that, uh, it, it kicked in in two thousand, February, two thousand eleven. Yeah. And Arcadus had originally, they interpreted to be eighteen months before that. Yeah, the night, you know, so.
How much money, how much money is that saving us?
I calculated around forty two thousand. I think I'm a little conservative.
That's what it's saving, excuse me, that's what it's saving us?
Yes.
And, and my other quite, first of all, I'm, I'm glad you did that. Cause I mean, I think that all spawned from the conversation we had a month ago. We went into the darkness that night. That may have never gone through and Arcadus at that point, we would have been approved and tax paid about forty grand. So I'm, I'm glad we had a conversation about that stuff, but I want to make sure that if we're starting this from February twenty eleven at that four percent, cause I know he was negotiable that night. He flat out said he wanted to go in another room. If we're gonna say this four, four percent that it's done now. So it'll be two thousand eleven to present, because if not, and, and we're giving them four percent until the project's done and it takes another three years, he's still gonna get his money. He's just getting on the backend instead of now. So I, I'll make the concession that I'll give him that four percent from two thousand eleven until today through a resigning this agreement. But there is zero reason to give him four percent for the next two or three years. Does that make sense?
Well, it does. I'm just not sure that it's really not what the original contract says. Says they can have a increase of four percent per year. Simple interest, so it'll compound.
Yeah, but aren't we starting over right now, though?
I guess what you're possibly starting over.
In other words, that four percent, if I understand what Brian said, that four percent should be from February through today.
Because we're getting the money now. That kind of figured, like, not the check's not even available. It's, I mean, we're, we're finally able to learn that, that brand should be, you know, moving forward. And we're reentering everything with them engaging saying, okay, we will backdate this, that four percent escalator from this date to, to present, because this is when we've re-engaged now. You know, we, they've already got half the way, but it's been sitting there this whole time. So for them to get it four percent for a year's worth, year and a half, doing absolutely nothing, there's no reason to give them four percent every, they have, they would have been set up to finish this contract five years from now, thirty eight, four percent interest every day that goes by. The, the longer that it takes them to finish, the more money they'll make.
Well, it'll, you know, it'll work that way.
Well, I mean, they were, it, it was you and Dan and USDA all thought that, you know, the other was the right date. They thought two thousand nine was the right date. They obviously are working really hard to get on their pockets the most. So I'm, I'm suggesting that, and if they want to make that concession, and we'll, we'll make that concession, that's fine. But I don't understand why we would enter into this agreement moving forward for an indefinite period of time. Maybe that four percent will ring back in the same boat that we're in.
What's your thoughts, Dan?
The way that the ordinance is written, the four percent escalator clause starts as two thousand nine rather than two thousand nine. It goes on each year. That's what the contract said. It's an annual process.
Almost every contract the city has has an escalator clause. There's, there's nothing unusual about that.
Yeah, but why, why would we want to continue to pay them four percent? I, I, why doesn't it like stop today and then restart tomorrow?
The contract is written two thousand seven. They plug this in because they knew that as time passed, it's going to be, if for no other reason, cost of living, whatever. That's the purpose of an escalator clause. It says almost every contract that the city has, has an escalator clause in it. This isn't something strange to this, this contract.
Yeah, I thought this four percent was because of the delay as opposed to an escalator clause every year, four across the line.
Well, the delay, the delay creates the need for the escalator clause. And that, that's the way the cost, contract is written. This, this four percent will start as of February two thousand eleven. And it will.
When does it end?
When, when, when they get paid, when the contract is over. And, and so you guys thought that that was the way that it read. There really has been no negotiation with them since our previous meeting. It was other than this is the way we read this language of when it's gonna start. And they know full well that they can drag their feet all day and still make that four percent.
Yeah, I, I don't understand why there's not an end to it. I mean, because if that's the case, it's gonna be four percent till the project's done. Until they're fully.
And that's only on the balance that's due.
I, I understand.
I understand what.
Right, I understand what you're saying. So if they, if we owe them half a million dollars, now that four percent's on half a million dollars. But why doesn't it, once we start the project, once we break ground and the shovel's in the ground and they're receiving money, why are we still paying them four percent? Because I thought the four percent was because of the delay. Once the delay stops and they're receiving money, shouldn't that four percent stop with them?
Well, so, but every dollar they receive.
I'm sorry?
When they receive the money, the, the four percent on that money is, is, is ended. The four percent carries, carries forward until they're paid in full. And there's no reason for them to delay. There's no, no reason whatsoever.
Oh, there's a four percent.
They're not gonna delay their work and they, they have other obligations under the contract. They're not, they're not making money on four percent. The four percent is to cover their additional costs over the year. There's, there's no incentive to do that. And, and there are other contract provisions that require them to proceed.
Why, why wouldn't we write something in here then that says for every year that goes by, that they're not finished, they have to pay us four percent?
The contract's already written, Brian. We've been dealing with this contract since two thousand seven.
Then we don't have to vote for this tonight.
If you're not gonna be able to proceed, if you don't.
Well, if, if the contract is already written, why not?
You lost me there.
If, if we already have this contract, why do we have to vote tonight to proceed?
Your dispute, you, you look at that.
So I'm disputing their. Right, so I'm saying I'd like to compound on that dispute. What, why not?
You can vote however you choose to vote. If you don't vote on it tonight, we can start.
Right.
We can start a month from now, like two months from now.
Have we received any funding from USDA? I mean, do we have a, a date from them?
We won't receive any funding until we get certain items completed, which take an interview.
But what negotiating, that, that was our last, two meetings ago, we were left with, you guys are gonna negotiate with them. What negotiating's in place?
Our negotiation was the interpretation of the contract. I mean, the four percent is built into the contract, but, I mean, they were gonna negotiate that.
They said they would.
Well, I don't think, I didn't, I didn't get that from them when we talked to them.
I just want to be clear that we asked you guys to negotiate and we really didn't. Because you, you said they don't want to. What's that?
Do whatever you want to do.
Now, this, the second page here, this a bit of attachment. It says, I made, the total lump sum compensation for the above is fifty thousand dollars. I thought it was gonna be less than the fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was proposed with fifty thousand dollars. That was in our original proposal.
Right, didn't you just say we were gonna save forty two thousand somehow?
No, I never said that. We saved the forty two thousand with the four percent deal, didn't kick in until two years later than two thousand nine. Three.
I'm, I'm happy with that savings, but I just don't understand why we would have something in here to prolong that indefinitely and have nothing in return to protect us. If the whole point of voting for this is to fix that, then we're all of the understanding that that's the point here is that we had a dispute and that this is gonna fix that dispute. Why wouldn't we put something in there that says, we will pay you from this date, two thousand eleven until today for that, on, on that balance that was owed. But going forward, the project is starting, the money is starting to come in and we move on, but you're not getting that additional four percent. I got every, it would make no sense for them to ever finish this job.
It's like the answer, they don't, they don't operate that way. I mean, you know, this, this thing, you know, our whole plan is to get this thing bid in the fall, if we ever get them hired. Bid, bid in the fall, construction will start probably late winter. And you got eighteen month construction period, that's it, they're done. I mean, that's, that's the schedule. They've made that schedule. I mean, they're, they're, they don't draw things out like.
And what protection do we have, dollar amount wise, if it takes more than eighteen months?
It takes more than eighteen months? I mean, it's a lump sum bid except for the four percent escalation clause.
I mean, when I built my house, my contractor had, uh, a clause written in there that, that I had to go in. It said, every day past this day, you're gonna pay me X, because the bank is gonna penalize me if I don't close in time. It's gonna cost me money. So the contractor had to be finished in time or else they start paying me. Why, why wouldn't we do something like that here?
Well, contractors, there usually is a clause in the contract as far as, you know, construction, because the only thing that'll slow this project down is the contractor. I mean, it won't be the engineer's fault if it gets dropped past that eighteen months.
But we still would be on the hook for that extra four percent?
I, I, I guess, but you know, that's, that's a yearly thing that, you know, it might be, you know, let's say it's, uh, it works out to be twenty months. But that four percent only kicked in, you know, on the yearly, uh, date of, of February, February.
So. The way, uh, this is my last thing, Jim. The way this was written originally, I did, by the looks of it, from two thousand seven, is they had a two or two year window or something to perform on before this kicked in with the escalator clause anyways, right?
Almost thirty six months.
Okay, so we had three years. So now we have zero years and the project still hasn't started. So they know day one that they're getting four percent if it takes them twelve months. Right? Because they, they, we're already, the three years over, we've already agreed doing this, that we're starting two thousand eleven. So instead of three years to finish this job, we know that it's, it's, we're paying four percent from a year ago to now, so if it takes two years, we're still making eight percent. Point on ten million dollars, that's a lot of money.
Not ten million dollars. Not ten million dollars, it's only on their fee. Only on their fee.
How many is your fee?
Over your fee?
Let's use a, a, a million dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars, right?
It's probably.
Yeah, what's that, eight hundred or nine hundred thousand?
So it's sixty, sixty five thousand dollars.
So, so on their, on, at, as of February twenty fifth, two thousand eleven, according to this, that's when the clock starts. So now we're, let's say eighteen months. So they've, they're gonna collect four percent on that whole amount that we owe for the last eighteen months.
That's right. All right, Dan?
That's right.
Well, that's the escalation clause. It's like the inflation clause.
Could I make? I don't wanna make this worse than it is, but they're, they're not gonna take this four percent and put it in their pockets and go to Las Vegas. I mean, that's to reflect the changes in costs from the date that they estimated. And we need to know that because that's pretty common practice.
You're right.
No, shut up.
I would agree with you, Bob. That, the, uh, but it's some other contracts. Different companies put out. Basically, they have escalator clauses in them. Cost really goes up every year. If we don't do this tonight, I would say the water plant, theoretically, right now, now USDA isn't gonna play games. They, uh, talk to them near from another, uh, fairly large town in the area and say they messed around with USDA with a similar thing. And they lost their money. They had to start over and reapply and it was several more years till they got it again.
I don't think that'll be the case here.
What, um? Oh, has you, then USDA hasn't given us any timeframe of when they're gonna release funds?
They don't release funds till a certain amount of work.
By.
There's certain paperwork still working. A lot of that work is three years.
What would be wrong with, with putting a, an end on this? That says that we will do this through, through tonight, pass it, and you go back to Arcadus and say, this is what I have passed. But this is, we need to take it earlier.
They haven't done the work and they're not getting paid tonight.
So what?
Why in the world would anybody agree to change their contracts and do that?
He said he would in the last.
No, he didn't say that. He said he would consider what you said and he'd take it back to his, his people.
And then we, we, we passed you guys who actually followed that.
And we, we told you what we've done. They're not willing to give up their four percent because they believe that the four percent is an appropriate escalator clause for them. We have many contracts with, that's their clause is a hundred and four percent. If, if you don't wanna do it, just say, no, I don't wanna do it. Like, I, I, we've explained the situation as best we can to you. If you, if you don't agree with it, that's fine. We can't explain it any further.
I, I would say in the future, for large, large projects, that, I mean, no one up here knew about this four percent escalator clause when this all started.
Well, no one expected to even have to deal with this four percent.
I, I, I agree with that, but in the future, for large contracts like this, or for any contract that has an escalator clause in it, it, it's gotta be brought up the council. It, it has to be. It has to be brought up before council to say yea or nay. And then we can negotiate before the contract even starts, or try to negotiate before the contract.
You understood when Dave was here at the meeting, you know, we did. You understood me when Dave was here at the meeting, you know, we did have a lump sum for the first three years while they were alive, and the reason is, they had all that built in, they weren't gonna arrange that each year the project would go on four percent, just a case of you just gonna get it done every year.
Then is you, is this money going into the grant money from USDA, or is this money that we have to come up with?
No, it'll.
Remember, we were gonna try.
They told me in the distribution, you're seeing.
So, uh.
It comes out of our heart.
There's all, there's a certain amount of money set aside for projects, case they go over, during the construction.
Any other comments? Yeah, I just have one. This, this ordinance is really, consists for the purpose of clarifying and broadening the scope of the services, so, so what we're approving tonight is some expansion of the, or clarification of what we want in the specifications of this contract.
We're repaying them to do the work they say they already did.
Oh, hold on, that's, this, I just wanted to know what this says, clarifying and broadening the scope of services of Arcadis U.S.A. for the construction phase and the resident project representation services for the water plant project. That's what we're gonna approve tonight. The only thing I have a question about is this new driveway thing, that's part of.
Oh, part of the addition?
Part of work. Part of the additional work. How, how is it that we decided we needed a new driveway?
Well, it's a case of, where the existing driveway is, is nothing but a lane, a farm lane, and if we start running trucks on down there in construction, we know we're gonna pull out money then. So it was Jay and my idea that was that we have all of this concrete from this project, why don't we just build a new drive, you know, up where trucks can go in and so forth, and we'll keep it separate, and that's all.
Trucks could, trucks could go in the old driveway?
Well, it could, but, you know, over a winter period, we're gonna put, somebody's gonna put a lot of money in that driveway to fix it.
Okay.
And that's all.
That's all I did.
Okay, so we had all this material, that's, that's what we decided to do, is build a new driveway.
Are the folks who own that, that farm that we bought, are they still designing?
They still design there.
We're not doing this because of the noise and conveniencing them, right?
No. Plus, we have to build a power line, and the plant to a new power line, and it's our intention to build that straight on this new road.
Okay.
Last number question, are we only paying four percent on the fifty thousand we're adding up tonight since the date on that starts back to two thousand eleven as well? The way this whole thing is written, you're adding fifty thousand dollars more into that.
Fifty thousand is just for those tax, and that's a lump sum.
We're not paying four percent on that?
Yeah, that's a lump sum.
We're sure.
Anyone else? King?
King?
Reluctantly, yes.
Scholander?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Any council comments?
I'll comment, based off of what we just voted on, I think that if we ask you guys that are tasked with negotiating something, can you tell us that we are not allowed to be involved in it? And Tom Ferguson's words are, we can't, we, we, we don't wanna have three council members back there being involved in a negotiation, we won't know what goes on, we don't know what went on with the two of you, what we do know is that you didn't do a single thing we asked, there was no negotiating, you sat there and you just took at face value what the man said in his meeting, never did what you said you were gonna do, we asked you to do.
Well, that's your expectation, huh?
Well, I mean, what I just asked tonight was, what, how did you come up with that? And it was just a de facto, well, they wouldn't do that, why would you? Has nothing to do with the conversation that took place, and I, I would say from a comment standpoint, that there was no negotiating involved, at least at a level that I would deem necessary to protect taxpayers' dollars.
I see.
Any other comments? Most new yours.
Nothing to say?
No, not a bit.
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt. I own a, and we own a house right across from, from Public Works at five thirty-three West Park, that house that's in front of that, I need the water shut off, because the first valve before the water meter is leaking into the old valve, and I can't get it. Give me your phone number so I can call you when I want to shut that off, if I don't wanna shut off till I know I'm gonna be there, that day to fix it. You're right on the topic. It'll probably be a weekend or a four, you know, Friday, just shut it, like, on Friday night, and then come back and turn it back on one of the lines. All right. Well, yeah, I mean, I'll call you during the day Friday and say, hey, go over and shut it, okay, okay. I don't even know where the curb box is, it's got a. Oh, okay, all right, so we'll be here for. That copper, that's all copper, you know, there's copper. It looks like, it comes up out of the floor, it looks like copper, because it looks like there's a solder joint, see, there's only about that much sticking out of the floor, it's hard to tell, yeah, scratch it, so, yeah, that valve is leaking, I can't get the packing, it's the original valve, and I can't get it to shut, oh, I'm gonna, I'll put a ball valve in, and I'm also gonna lift it up off the floor, and that too, so it isn't so hard, all right.